I'd like to call this meeting of the Caldwell County Board of Education to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here for the February 10th, 2014 meeting. And we want to welcome each of you here and hope you'll enjoy the next few days here. We probably, many of us will be competing for milk and bread here shortly. So anyway, I know Dr. Stone to my right here is still hoping and praying. And I know a lot of you probably as well that we not have any bad weather, but it's certainly not looking particularly good at this point. But anyway, we're so glad you're here with us this evening. This time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Joe Sims, who's going to do our invocation.
Please pray with him. Dear Lord, I just want to thank you for getting each one of us here safe, and I pray that you'll get us back to our destinations safe tonight. Be with this board as we make decisions tonight, and let us make decisions that would be pleasing to you. Most of all, dear Lord, just please be with all the students and the parents and guardians of those students, the faculty, the staff, the administration of all the schools. I pray that you'll keep your blessings on them as they go about through their daily lives. Thank you so much for allowing us to come to you with all the praises that we have because they come through you, but also make us realize early and quick that we can come to you with all of our troubles, and you'll help us through those. In Jesus' name I ask this. Amen.
Next is our Pledge of Allegiance, tonight being led by Career Center Middle College students, Michael French, 10th grader, and Rachel Robinson, 11th grader. So if everyone will please stand.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda which the board has had for several days now. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda as you have had opportunities to review it?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the agenda.
Yes, okay.
Second.
Second. Any thing to add? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the approval of the minutes, and our last board meeting was January 13th, regular board meeting, and that was here in the boardroom. And that was followed by a closed session, and there's minutes available to the board in regards to those two meetings. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes of those meetings on January the 13th?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of January 13th, the regular board meeting minutes, as well as the closed session minutes.
Second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Before we move on to the honors and recognitions, I've got just a couple things here to mention. Someone found a small little heart, looks like it could go on maybe an earring or possibly a pendant of some sort. It's a little heart with a garnet type stone in it. Libby Brown, our community relations director down here at the table, has it. If anyone in here is missing that, just see her. And another item I want to bring up, last Friday, Special Olympics was held at South Caldwell High School, and Mr. Knight did some of the announcing there. I was down there, and I told them that I would mention their polar plunge that's coming up. So on February 22nd, we need to all get out there and support Special Olympics. They're going to provide a donut and hot chocolate for you and a tee-shirt, and the donation is $25. Now, if you want to jump, they will give you a tee-shirt with a polar bear on the front of it. And if you don't want to jump, they're still going to give you a tee-shirt, but it's going to have a frozen chicken on the front of it. So it's for a good cause. $25 for a very good cause. So that's on February 22nd if you can do that. Okay. That wasn't anything, was it? Okay, it's been brought to my attention, it's not on my agenda here, that we had a, at West Caldwell, and this is in our minutes, that at West Caldwell on the 27th, we had a community meeting, and we have minutes in our packets that reflect what took place that night, so we need to approve those. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes of the community meeting at West Caldwell on January 27th?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes of the community meeting from January 27th, 2014.
Okay, is there a second? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. And, thank you. It was not on my agenda. I should have known we had a meeting that day at West Caldwell. One other thing that I want to mention too, one of the members of the board just happens to have a birthday today. So Mrs. Linda Coffey, it's her birthday today, and is it 39?
It's 39.
Okay.
And holding.
I'm glad you remembered that. You're unholding.
Somebody said something, I had a birthday not too long ago, somebody said something to me about it, and they said 40, 39. And I said, "Well, no, I'll settle for 49. We'll go with 49." So anyway, happy birthday, Mrs. Coffey. Next on the agenda is the honors and recognitions, and the board will move down front to welcome these as they come forward. And Ms. Libby Brown will call out the names of those individuals receiving awards.
Good evening, Chairman, Panel, Board Members, and Dr. Stone, and I would like to first off say, I would gladly and proudly wear a chicken tee-shirt on February 22nd.
That's what I'm going to want to do.
But we're going to turn our attention to some great artists in our school system, and these are students whose artwork is on display for the month of February in our Education Center Art Gallery. So artists, as I call your name, please come forward for recognition and a certificate from the Board of Education and our superintendent. We are going to start with Horizons Elementary, and Teresa Hartley is the principal, and Neo Morrow, 3rd grade, is in our Education Center Art Gallery. So is, not here tonight? I thought we'd have fewer people here tonight because of the bread and milk scenario, but they made it out. Okay, we'll move on. Whitnall Art Teacher, David Hefner, Andy Berry is principal, and Faith Logan, 3rd grade.
And we're going to have an opportunity for you to take pictures, so we're going to get a group up here and then just come on and snap away.
Yes. Granite Falls Middle School Art Teacher, Mary Rizzo. Brianna Swanson, 8th grade, is our artist from Granite Falls Middle School. And Bill Schreiber is the principal, and I think Bill is here this evening. Hudson Middle School Art Teacher, Kelly Woody. And Gavin Scruggs is in the 6th grade, and his, this student's art is on display. And Bill Griffin is the principal, so I saw Bill earlier. Do you want to? Okay, Gavin. Hi, Brighton High School Art Teacher, Margaret Martini. And David Caldwell is the principal. Courtney Wright is here tonight representing Hi-Brighton. Michael Bell, 9th grader. Abby Collins, 9th grader. And Carolina Dula, also a freshman at Hi-Brighton High School. South Caldwell High School Art Teacher, Jamie Stewart. Mike Peake is principal. We have Leanne Blankenship, sophomore. Alexis McConnell, sophomore. Jordan Pagan, senior. Kelsey Price, sophomore. So do we have any of our Spartans here tonight? We have one.
No Spartans? All right.
All those high school students are online, I guess, talking about the weather tomorrow. Okay, well, this is, I think this is it for our art students. Do we have any others? We do. Okay. Okay, I didn't print that sheet out, I'm sorry. Okay. Maddie Moore. She'll come forward. Sarah Story. These are from West Caldwell, yes. Clay West. Clay West and Megan Williams. Oh, we have some warriors, so thank you, sorry about that. So we do have some of our warriors here tonight. So this is the time that we allow our parents to come up and have a photo opportunity with their children, so. Stand aside here.
All right, everyone has a smile, the camera stops, so just give a pose. We'll have plenty of opportunities, so if someone's in front of you, just wait to let take theirs and move on up. Anyone? Last go. All right, thank you guys so much.
Okay, now we're going to talk a little bit about reading. We've talked about our artists, so please, please look down the main hallway at the beautiful artwork that's on display if you haven't had a chance. So thank you, artists and families, for being here. We are also pleased and proud this evening to recognize elementary students who have read not just over 1,000 words, or 10,000 words, or 100,000 words, but have read over 1 million words during the first semester. So this is a great feat, considering first semester is about four months. These students have an average of 85% or higher on an accelerated reader quizzes. And the Accelerated Reader Program, the AR Program as it's referred to, is in some of our elementary schools. Not all of them, but schools can elect to have this reading program in their schools. So we are very proud tonight to recognize those students in the schools which have this program and those students that have excelled in reading. So this is, just remember that if you can kind of register that, over 1 million words in four months. So we're very proud of these students. We're going to start with Davenport School, Davenport A+ School, and Julia Knight is the principal. So we're going to start with Grayson Clark. We also have from Davenport, John Thomas Gudis. I know Rachel comes from a reading family. And Brooklyn Binfield. Okay, do you want to do another school?
No, it's going to be Davenport.
Okay, so let's do Davenport. We have Grayson, John Thomas, Rachel, who isn't here. I don't think Rachel Bast is here. Bronwyn and Brooklyn. Okay, so we have those students from Davenport A+. Next, we move to Dudley Shoals Elementary, and we have Gwen Rupe as principal, and Autumn King is the star tonight from Dudley Shoals Elementary. And we have one student from Gamewell Elementary, Charmin Frizell is principal, she's with us tonight. Bryn Hadley. So Bryn Hadley. Okay, and Granite Falls Elementary. Amy Lohman again is with us tonight from Granite Falls Elementary. We have Vincent Anderson and Levia Clark. And let's do one more school, Hudson Elementary. Andy Poole is here tonight, principal, and Evan Lewis. So Evan Lewis from Hudson Elementary is our 1 million word reader. Is he with us? Would you like to come up? Okay, come and join us. So we have a moment for pictures if you have a child up here.
All right. Okay. Come over a little bit, and anybody smiling, anybody looking at the camera? Camera. All right, congratulations.
Okay, Lower Creek Elementary. We have several from Lower Creek. Not here this evening? Okay. Delany Gutierrez. Delany? Not here tonight? Okay. Landon Chapman. Not here tonight? Okay. Okay, we're going to hold you to that. Aiden Mudd. And Jack Hillis. So congratulations to you from Lower Creek, and Leanne Frye is principal. So thank you, Leanne, for helping with that.
Oh, all guys.
Okay.
Now we know the readers aren't Lower Creek now.
We have our book here tonight, so maybe the others forget.
Okay, now we're moving to Saw Mills Elementary School, and Lowell Rogers is principal, he's here this evening. We have James Ingram. Abigail Greg. Abigail Greg. And Rachel Teeters. All three students from Saw Mills Elementary. Rachel here this evening? Okay, Rachel isn't here. Okay. Valmeet. We have a superstar in Valmeet, Kelly Houck. Carol Sturge is the principal, she's here this evening, and Kelly actually had more words than any of the other students. 1,955,048 words. Almost 2 million. And then Whitnall Elementary, and Andy Berry is here. Anai, thank you. I was close. Anai Gonzalez. And Genesis Garcia. So all three students from Whitnall Elementary.
Someone's not smiling over there.
Okay, before you, before you sit down, Board Members, one of our audience members has calculated, that would be 8,033 words a day. So I challenge the audience and parents to try to read a million words to your children or just to yourself for the next four months. So thank you. With all those children, please just stand up one more time. It's such a wonderful accomplishment. Very proud of you.
I know you all are anxious to go home and buy that milk and that bread, so we'll let you go in just a minute. I do want to call one, attention to one thing before you leave. January is School Board Appreciation Month, and we missed it. So we are celebrating it in February, and I'd like to present to you seven of our board members who work very, very hard, who do this as a passion and a love. So would you please join me in a round of applause for our Board of Education for what they do? Now go get your bread, but keep praying, no snow, no snow.
I did it. I thought it was.
We had you thrown for the community board, Dave.
Him, I did that. It wasn't even on me.
You just have a hole.
That's correct. That's what I'm thinking.
Oh, really? It's not on me?
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah.
Kind of stays there.
For those of you still here, let me make one other announcement. At the Early College this Friday at 9:45, if indeed we're in school, I hope we are, they're doing the Locks of Love, where they have their haircut and it's used for the Wig Bank, and I've been to that before. It's indeed a great event, so if you have an opportunity, go down there and support that. Next on the agenda is public comment, and as of 4:30 this afternoon, we had received no items for public comment. This time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Steve Stone, our superintendent.
So the month of February, not only do we get, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, not only do we get to celebrate the great board a month late, but it is also CTE Month, so we do have Kathy Jo, who will come and briefly, kind of as she does every year, give you an update on what's going on in CTE. Everyone by now knows CTE stands for Career Technical Education. It is not vocational anymore. But they do a great job and have some wonderful statistics. I know Kathy put a, Kathy Jo put a brochure in front of you, but we do want to join them in celebrating February as National CTE Month, and certainly appreciate all that's done here in the county. Kathy Jo?
Thank you, Dr. Stone, Dr. Panel, Board. It's a pleasure for me to be here and to recognize CTE, but it's not about me, it's about my CTE teachers and my students, and I just so excited, the things that they accomplish in their classrooms and the benefits that the students receive from CTE. I'm not going to go through the brochure, you can read that, but we have many exciting facts and figures in there, like the graduation rate of CTE concentrators and all those that go to four-year universities or community college and so forth. But one thing that we really are into more now are industry credentials, and this is something that really benefits our students, it gives them a leg up when they go to get a job or onto college. And I selected two of my instructors, they're very involved in that, and I think they have some good stories to tell you. But I listed some of the different credentials that we have not just offered, but students have earned this past year. And the students earned over 1,375 credentials last year. So that's a lot. The largest amount is in our Microsoft Office classes, of course, a lot of our students take those courses. So not only do they learn a valuable skill, they earn an industry credential. The other thing is work keys, and that gives them the Career Readiness Certificate. We're finding some very valuable things about that as the students go out into the workplace. Another area, we just started the Nursing Fundamentals Program last year, and that was at Hi-Brighton in South, and we added it to West this year, so she's teaching some nursing students right now. 19 students took and passed that National Nurse Aid credential, so they can walk right in as a CNA. So I'm going to quit talking since my time is short, and I'm going to introduce two of my teachers. I have Patty Ramsey from the Career Center Middle College, and she is in the Business Department. Department. And then also Ms. Gina Kincaid, and she is from South Caldwell, also in the Business Department. So ladies?
Good evening, Board, Dr. Stone.
Good evening.
I'm glad to be here tonight to introduce to you maybe, hopefully, some things that you don't know about CTE. But, you know, three main things about CTE. I've been here for five years in the department, and I always have my three F's, and that's be flexible, we're like family, our CTE, you know, we're all together even if we're not in that same discipline, and funding, that's always important too. So we always thank you for your support. I know some of you help out with CTE and our CTSOs that we also offer, like FBLA and DECA. Some of our industry-recognized certifications, credentials that we have, she mentioned Microsoft Office Specialist. Last semester alone, at South Caldwell, we had sixty-one students certify in Word, sixty-four certified in PowerPoint, thirteen in Excel, and eleven in Access. And we have some of those, you know, this semester also going for those same credentials. Every semester, we have a lot of students. We also had a student, Savannah Starnes, who's a junior, receive a perfect score of one hundred on the Word certification test, which I think has only been done one other time at High Brighton. So we're trying to beat them. It's a competition. So we're very excited for her, and now she's in the national run, hopefully for a scholarship. It depends on the length of time that it took her to receive that perfect score in taking her test. So we're proud of her. Personal Finance is one of my classes that I really focus on. We have seven courses this semester alone at South, so that's sort of my baby that I've been trying to work on. And we do EverFi Financial Certification. And my students work semester-long on modules and simulations. And it incorporates, you know, animation, 3D gaming, avatar, something that students are really into. And they earn certification at the end of the semester by doing that, so they get a really nice certificate that they can keep with them. And this semester, I'm trying something new with Wise Financial, which I receive through a grant, where I pre-test and post-test my students. And they can also earn certification through the Wise program as well. So I'm hoping I get a lot through that. But last semester alone, I had forty-one that certified in the EverFi. And right now, I have fifty-one in my classes that are hoping to get certification. Some success stories I've had, you know, I have many students that go through, and I'll go in contact with them later on, who will tell me, you know, I took Work Keys, I didn't think much of it at the time, but I went and took it to my boss. I had a student in the insurance company, she showed her boss her certification, and she got a raise. Another student that received the Microsoft Word and PowerPoint, Excel, and Access certification, she went for a job interview, and she was up against another person. And she came back after she got the job, and they told her that it was because of that certification, because what made the difference between her and the other candidate. So we stress to our students, you know, always go for what we present to you, because it's free. You know, it's a big thing, because you'll pay for it if you're not in their classes and things like that. So go for those credentials, carry those certificates around, you never know when it's going to come in handy. So, you know, we're really proud of all these students, and we're proud of all the teachers that really pursue these certifications and teach it each and every day. And I thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. I'm Patty Ramsey, and I teach at the Career Center. And we are a technical school, so of course we do certificates and whatever we can grab. Last semester, for example, we were at a hundred percent on Microsoft certifications. That's the goal of the whole academy, the AT Academy. And we teach not just our academy, but the Engineering Academy, as well as the Life Science Academy, the certifications. We think it's important in all areas. So last semester, a hundred percent, not bad. I can't think of many semesters that were not a hundred percent. And that's what we're here for, are on the campus of CCCNTI, is to send them out, ready to work, ready to go. CTE is what helps us gear that and go towards that. I am a big CTE person, as far as believing not everybody is meant to go four years, not everybody's meant to go two years, not everybody's meant to be in the same round hole. We're all different, and I want, we want parents to recognize that, that there's two-year degrees out there that are kicking four-year degree rear ends. And a story that I would like to tell you, I have two daughters at Appalachian, and one is going into the nursing program, and she did an internship through CTE. And she just applied at Appalachian to go into the nursing program next year, where she didn't make it, she got her letter last week. She's a, she made two Bs the whole time she's been at Appalachian, but there's only forty slots. And there's three hundred and some applying for those forty slots. Well, I just got off the phone right before I got here with her, because she was devastated. And she's talking to Marilyn Gamble, who was the CTE, what do you call them, sponsor? That's who she did her internship with. She said, "Mom," she said, "working with Marilyn when I was in high school, CTE." She said, "Marilyn told me not to worry about it." She said, "Go on down to Lenora Run, check in there." And sure enough, she called me on the phone coming here, and she said, "Mom, they want me so bad there, I can taste it." And so she's creaming the crop there, but there's more slots open. And so it's opened her eyes up, not only when she did the internship, but now it's opened her eyes up as far as how valuable all these technical skills are. Because she was ready to come back to a, go back to a school in Charlotte and do a technical degree program, which is what the Career Center is, and which is what Kathy Jo supports us strongly with. And that just tells us how, how much credentialing means, and how much two-year degree programs mean. It's not just a four-year degree program world anymore, even though we encourage to keep going. So that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Do you have any questions for these teachers?
I just want to know if they're really hoping that we have no snow tomorrow, or they're really, I mean, they just don't, they look like they may be a little excited about delay.
They have a day to watch the Olympics.
Then we won't be able to watch it on Saturday.
Our shift is just on a three-hour delay each day, and that works perfectly.
That works perfect, fits the schedule. No, I do want to comment, Kathy Jo, I think we can be extremely proud of our CTE program, and all of our staff in Caldwell County. When you look at some of the statistics in this brochure, you'll be equally impressed that this program is by far one of the strongest that I've ever been, ever had a chance to be associated with. And so hats off to Kathy Jo for her leadership, but certainly to those classroom teachers who really are, they really are making a difference by their relationships with children, but are also giving them options where they can be highly successful in life. So thank you for these two ladies for that, and for all of the CTE teachers who do it. CTE is a really saving grace, it's a dropout prevention program, it's a connection-to-school program. It's really one of the best things we can do to get kids engaged in school, and to keep them engaged, and then give them a great pathway to life and success. So thank you, ladies, for what you do every day. And thank you, Kathy Jo.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just moving on to Item B for Board Action. I do want to call your attention to Exhibit Two. I think this will be the last time we have to look at Board Policy Manual revisions. This is the Index of Governing Principles. It has been out for one month, comment period. This should complete our work with the School Boards Association, and the administration would like to recommend approval of the policies twelve-hundred, thirteen-hundred, fourteen-hundred, fifteen-hundred, sixteen-hundred, seventeen-hundred, and eighteen-hundred.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve policies, can I say, twelve-hundred through eighteen-hundred? Shorten it just a little bit as presented.
Is there a second?
A second to motion.
Anyone have any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Any input? Motion passes.
Thank you, members of the board. The second item for adoption is, will be, the school calendars for 2014, 2015. This is Exhibit Three. The Traditional Calendar calls for the start of school to start on August the 25th, to end on June the 11th. And we have built into that calendar the one hundred and eighty days over one thousand and fifty hours, which meets the state requirements of the law. The second calendar is for the Career Center Middle College, as well as the Early College, and that starts for students on August the 7th and ends on May the 20th. It also meets the requirements of state law of a hundred and eighty days and/or one thousand, over one thousand twenty-five hours. So we'd like to recommend approval of both calendars. We have received no public comment on either one of the calendars.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the calendars, that being the Traditional Calendar and the Calendar for the Early College, Middle College for 2014, 2015?
Mr. Chairman, I move that calendars for 2014, 2015, both the Traditional and the other calendars be approved as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any comments? All those in favor say aye. Any input? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to Item Three for Action, and this is an administrative recommendation. The administration would like to recommend Stephen Suits to become the Director for the Caldwell County Schools Maintenance Department. A little bit about him, and he's in the audience, I'll ask him to go ahead and make his way to the podium. He currently serves in our Maintenance Department as the Assistant for Shop Formant. He has experience with Caldwell County Schools dating back to nineteen ninety-four, and has certainly done almost probably everything you could possibly do in the department. So it's with great interest that I recommend Stephen Suits to be our Director of Maintenance. And Stephen, I'm going to give you a minute to, just in a minute, after they approve you, a minute to say anything you may want to say to the board.
Do I hear a motion that we approve Stephen Suits to be the Maintenance Department Supervisor?
I move we approve Stephen Suits as the new Maintenance Director.
Is there, okay, we have a second. Any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye. Any input? Congratulations.
The effective date will be, I believe, March the 1st. And welcome aboard, Stephen, I want to give you this opportunity, if you want to say anything. Put you on the spot, you look like a man of many words, so I...
Thank you, Dr. Stone, and thank you, board members, and this opportunity, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Dr. Trish Johnson, the Associate Superintendent for Human Resource
Hey, Trish. Okay, I'm there now. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Stone, I have several items for your attention this evening, starting with Exhibit Five. Exhibit Five includes personnel items that are usual and customary and for your attention only, requiring no action. Exhibit Six includes usual and person, usual and customary personnel items that require attention. They require your action for approval. I respectfully recommend approval of these items as they have been presented.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the usual and customary personnel matters?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the usual and customary personnel matters. Second?
And a second, any comments or questions?
I got a question. On the substitute teacher list, that's what we're voting on, correct? That's where... Are these people on the list, are they, can they substitute at any school and do any subject? Or are there some with some restrictions on them?
There are restrictions. And oftentimes, individuals will indicate the schools that they elect to substitute in, and even the subject areas, or sometimes we provide restrictions.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Any input? And the motion passes.
Okay, and we'll move on to Exhibit Seven. Exhibit Seven includes the request for student transfers. Since your last board meeting, we had twelve requests for student transfers of the seven all-meet-established criteria, and we recommend approval of those twelve as they have been presented to you. If approved tonight, that brings our total transfer requests for the year to five hundred and eighty-four. I respectfully recommend approval of the transfer request. Student transfer requests.
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve the student transfer requests.
Do I hear a second? Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Any input? Motion passes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we have, Dr. Stone actually is going to be presenting this for Carla Miller, the Finance Officer. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Stone.
And Carla sends her regrets, she's at a statewide meeting for finance officers, so she regrets that she's not here. But she did ask me if I could try to explain the budget amendments in Exhibit Eight and Exhibit Nine. In Exhibit Eight, the budget amendments are to the State Public School Fund and to the Federal Grants Fund. The first one, Amendment Twelve, is the addition of fifty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars to the State Public School Fund. And you'll see the breakdown from that, basically is fifty-three thousand for EC Developmental Daycare Funds, some additional monies, once fourteen seventy-five for substitute, ninety-five for technology. So altogether, that would make the final state fund of seventy-one million nine hundred and sixty-two, two hundred and eighty-one. The Budget Amendment Thirteen is to federal grants program, and this is again, one of the things we like to see, is an additional one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, six hundred and five, to the federal grants. And you can see the breakdown, several codes that are coming in from those. And that will bring the entire amount from federal funds, seven thousand, seven million, six hundred fifty-nine, one thirty-five. Now, if you approve these two amendments tonight, Carla will usually tell you, that gives us a budget of a certain number. I forgot to ask about that. So let's just say somewhere in the ballpark of a hundred and seventeen million, maybe a hundred and eighteen million, so. And I know she will cringe when she hears my report, but I will find out from her, and we will certainly have that in the e-notes to you. I thought about that when I came in, I don't have that number, but she always does it. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to recommend approval of the budget amendments to Amendment Twelve and Thirteen.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the budget amendments to the State Public School Fund, as well as the Federal Grants Fund?
I move that we approve both the Budget Amendment Number Twelve to the State Public School Fund, and Budget Amendment Number Thirteen to the Federal Grants Fund as presented.
Second.
Any questions? Tom is? Nobody has anything for Dr. Stone?
Please, no questions.
All those in favor say aye. Any input? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item, or Exhibit Nine, has the 2013, 2014 Audit Contract, and that is correct, that is for 2013, 2014 school year. We are recommending that we approve the Audit Contract with Boggs, Crump, and Brown, PA. They've been doing it for a number of years for us, they do a great job, and the, to the tune of about thirty-four thousand dollars is what we would go up to in fees for them. An audit is required for many programs, all programs of our size, so they've done a great job for us, so I'd like to recommend approval of that 2013, 2014 Audit Contract.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the Audit Contract for 2013, 2014?
I make a motion we approve the contract for Boggs, Crump, and Brown.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any input? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Stone. Carla would be pleased.
Carla would have one. I would be interested to see what Carla would say.
Okay, next item is for board information, and we've got a couple of reports here. We, you know, many of us are going to training of one sort or another, and we're very pleased that Dottie is able to be a part of the NSBA Advocacy Institute Conference in Washington, DC recently. So, Dottie, if you will tell us about that.
Okay, they have actually changed the name this year from the Federal Relations Conference to the Advocacy Institute. And the National School Board Association is working on getting everybody on board and realizing that every, this day and age, public education is being attacked from so many different directions. And we had some sessions talking about some of the reasons for this, some of the funding for this, and so forth, and it's pretty scary. And she, what they want us to remember is that every single one of us in public education must be an advocate. And you might notice... This was the theme for the meeting this year. And NSBA is in the process of rolling out a new website with information that will be available to all of us, that we can use as we are advocating for public education, whether it be on a one-to-one basis, or whether it be as we deal with the media, or on our website and so forth. And I've already shared this with Libby right after I got back. After we have our meeting sessions on Tuesday, we spend the day on Capitol Hill. And it's like I was saying, the word "hill" is just not sort of a cute description. It is a big hill. Trish has been there. When you traipse back and forth from the House to the Senate and back and forth three or four times, you climb a lot of hills that day. So it took my feet a couple of days to get over that. Both of our senators, Senator Hagan and Senator Burr, were actually on the Senate floor that, most of that day. And actually, some of us did go over for about an hour to the Senate Gallery after we passed through four different layers of security. And they did allow us in, and so we were actually able to see our senators from a distance. Then I did meet with our congressional representative, Mr. Mark Meadows. He was there, and I was pleased to have the opportunity to talk with him. The most fun part was when I walked in the door, somebody said, "Mrs. Darcy, it is you." It's a recent High Brighton High School graduate. Do you know Tara Davis? Do you remember?
I do. I knew Tara, but I worked at West Caldwell when she was at High Brighton. I do know her.
But you know Tara?
Brady Davis.
Well, yes. Tara is a student at Appalachian right now and is doing an internship in Congressman Meadows' office this semester. So, I mean, imagine, she lives about three blocks from me. Imagine my surprise, you know, seeing somebody I knew right there. And one of the things that was so neat about having her there, the congressman invited her to sit in on our meeting. And so some of the things that I brought before him were things she said, "Oh, I remember when they did that at High Brighton," or "I remember that," and so forth. And, I mean, I think that really helps to cement some of these ideas in our members of Congress. And I want to thank, you know, Dr. Burns, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Simple, Guy Garner, Carla Miller, a lot of our staff provide me with information and concrete examples, because often, these people just don't get it. They're so far removed from what we see and do every day with our students, that they don't realize the impact of some of the decisions they make. And that's one of the things that we work the hardest, is to give them concrete examples from our own school system, so that when they are making decisions, hopefully they'll, you know, "I remember, she said that was a real problem, and so why are we cutting the funding for that?" Or, "Why are we restricting that to competitive grants?" Or whatever the case may be. So I'm very appreciative to all of our staff who work with me every year. I usually come with a list of questions that they want specific examples to illustrate. So I'm not making any promises. We're very upfront when we go to meet with our legislators and their staff. And we say, "You know, one of the big things we're looking for, it's money." And so we're honest and upfront, but we tell them why we need it. So as I say, I'm smart enough not to make any concrete promises, but hopefully, we're beginning to, you know, make some inroads and help some of these folks understand what we really need.
Thank you, Mrs. Darcy. We appreciate that report. Everyone on the board has gone to School Board 101 now. Joe was able to go, I think that was in January, a couple of weeks ago. So we're going to ask him to report a little bit on School Board 101.
Awesome. Well, we're going from one of the more tenured School Board members to the new kid on the block here. It was, it was really a great conference. I look forward to it whenever they start talking about it. I was, as everyone knows, I was appointed in June, so I had a few months under my belt whenever I went in, because it is obviously for new School Board members who have been elected. Dr. Stone attended with me and sort of gave me some guidance there a few times. But it was, it was really interesting, because it covers basically everything that we are elected to do, you know, from, from how to participate in a meeting to, I'm just going to name a few of the topics. I've got the book here, if anybody wants to read, to get your million words in. There's probably a million in that book, and they covered them all in two days, it seemed like. But it, the ones that really stuck out with me is, you know, her being an advocate, you know, in the legislative. And that's one of the things, you know, is talked about, if you know legislative people, be an advocate for the school, which, you know, we are advocates for the school here in the community, but to expand that. And that was really interesting. Then we are required each term to have an ethics class, three, it's three hours. And so I got mine there, so with being a newbie there, I got my ethics class in. It's on how to deal with personnel issues, a lot of information about public school finance, and, you know, Dr. Stone has obviously mastered that now, because he can do the presentations. And public records, the education law in North Carolina, policy development, which is what we've been voting on, and, you know, how to conduct the meetings. And also, we have to each have 12, up to 12 hours, a minimum of 12 hours of continuing that each year. And I was proud to say, which, you know, or to be able to tell you guys and the public that, you know, our board has got an award for everyone meeting that. And, you know, so they all work hard, all of our board does. And it was really a great conference. It did get a little, let alone on late Friday afternoon, but we all got through it. Thank y'all for allowing me to DM.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Next item on the agenda, I'll turn it over to Dr. Stone, see if he has any reports.
Just want to call attention, you have in front of you board members of Valentine's Cart from the Wraparound Programs in Caldwell County. They wanted to make sure you felt appreciated, particularly here at Valentine's Day. You also have a take-home box of goodies from the Education Center and a Board Appreciation Month. Snow make-up days, we've determined that those are going to be February the 20th and March the 27th, for the two days that we've already missed. And as has been mentioned before, we're watching the weather tonight, tomorrow, and the rest of the week to see what comes. But if, you know, one of the options, of course, is Saturday school, very distasteful for a lot of folks, but it's something that, as a, as a school system, with the limited opportunities with our calendar, we don't have a whole lot of choices without taking away spring break, or some of the breaks in which parents develop their travel plans around. So we will be watching the sky tonight, and tomorrow, and Wednesday, and Thursday, and Friday. Jeff will be out and about at 4:00. Stephen, you know this is a part of your job too, so congratulations on that. But we'll be watching the weather and be making that call, but it's going to be a rough winter, we believe, so stay tuned for that. But I want you to, again, recognize that these come from the Wraparound Program and appreciation of what you do, and happy Board Month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stone. Jeff, you need to go home, go to bed, don't you? We have a few announcements here. Our next regular board meeting is on March the 10th, 2014, here at the Education Center at 6:00. And we have a scheduled work session on March 24th, 2014, and that will be at 3:00 at South Caldwell High School. That will be followed by a community board meeting at South Caldwell High School, and that will begin at 6:00. So those are the announcements. Anyone else have any other announcements?
Groundbreaking ceremony.
Absolutely. Groundbreaking ceremony is coming up on the 25th of this month, and I surely hope we don't have snow that... But anyway, on February 25th, 2014, we will be having a groundbreaking ceremony of the New William Lenore Middle School, and that will be at 4:00 in the afternoon. So we hope that you will have the opportunity to be there and, and celebrate that occasion with us. We've been looking forward to that for a long time, so, anyway, we look forward to that.
I move that we, the board moves to a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A3, Garrison versus Caldwell County Schools, Board of Education, and Steve Stone.
Do I, a second? Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No business.
And there'll be no business, so we will not be voting on anything when we come out. Thank you for being here. Drive safely over the next few days, always. Not just today.
Kathy, will you get the phone going for us? And we will be... Trish, will you have the honor of joining us?